So Jeff, do you want to take the first fiber optics on big and see if that would be?
Sure. I was thinking I might have some on my teeth and I realized it doesn't. I'll just read that by this road. With fiber optics, a couple of you councillors had hit me up about readdressing this issue and maybe seeing if we want to approach it a little more assertively. And so I don't have a much background or other than what I put in the report. There were some things from South Grove that was presented when Pete Lovering came. And there was a proposal we got from Onet some time ago. I did redact the pricing, but it gave the deliverables. So I'm just hoping to hear if council would like to see us approach this a little more assertively, then that's absolutely great. We just need some general discussion.
So I had brought it up because I had a couple of business owners hit me up last week, if I want to say? Yeah, I think it was last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, just saying that they were already, they were using the no, they were using the the help or the whatever that was called. They were using it and it's still just, it's not fast enough. They can't download files. It's just, it's not fiber optic. And so they were just wanting, wanted me to push it further to let them. And so that's why I got hold of Jeff and was like, you know, where are we at? I know, anyway. So I just asked him if we could talk about it a little bit more.
Now, that is something that I always felt in the past as fiber optics was possibly something that would be an important feature of any town moving forward. Because it allows people to work from home. And with the speed they need, any kind of business, being draft person or being whatever, could do business. And I always was impressed with the town of Kimberly who had fiber in their town and allowed people to move to that town because of the great outdoors, but to also have a fantastic way of life. So that always intrigued me. And I really was hoping for AXIA to become the provider of that fiber. Except we were one month, one month short of having the deliverable, which was unfortunate. And there was definitely, at least a good third of the town, there was there and had signs that desired to see fiber optic in the town. So I know that it is something that people would support, I believe. The only trouble is in a time they would support it because there was no cost attached to it. And it's true that infrastructure would not have costed anything. Having said that, unless we have a model like OLS, which is you own your own fiber, so you have to build it up. We have the poles, we have all that stuff. There is a definite cost and I don't really understand if there is a business case strong enough to be able to recoup the money if you were to, to borrow the money for that purpose. So that is, or do we have it built like it was suggested in Southwest kind of right up, that we become the utility provider? And then try to have the, the capacity to sell the excess of the program to somebody else. So I, I don't know. Jeff can maybe can enlighten us because honestly, I'm a little bit in a fog this beyond and beyond that. I do not remember the amount that OLS had quoted us, but I know it was over a million dollars.
Well, they quoted us, if I might, they had quoted us about to do a little more of a study, but councillor South, I remember, we weren't crazy about the deliverables for the place. It left, it was a little short of what we were looking to achieve, and so we stalled on that. We had councillor South and I had a very, let's call it preliminary and anecdotal estimate from the gentleman, I think it was Chris that we talked to in Edmonton that day, of about that number mayor. But that was without a lot of, that was on the fly, very, very well.
Okay, it was really bottom line, rock bottom, nothing.
Yeah.
So I also wanted this on the agenda. There, there is another alternative. And the town of Milk River is being, they're doing an experiment called Sicklu and they are using Terigraft, which is a Facebook company. And it's, it's basically air fiber. You don't put a bunch of fiber on the poles or in the ground. And it's a mesh network. So in talking with Phil, councillor Colley from South Grove, he was saying that this service can provide theoretically up to six gigabytes. But what they're offering their customers is like 300 meg. So it's still far superior than anything you can get. And what he suggested, and I think we should take him up on it, is in two weeks they'll have their system set up. And the way they're doing this is they're putting it on the light posts. They're actually putting the transmitters on the light posts and it covers about a two or a three or four block area of each transmitter. And the cost is significantly less. So what he said is, why don't you or whoever on your council and the CAO come on down in two weeks and I'll show you what we got and show you how it's working.
I think you should.
That's a great idea.
I think you really should. Anything would be better than what we've got.
So anyway, that's, I don't know. If you want to just, I want to make a recommendation.
I'll make it. I'll make a recommendation that councillor South and the CAO go to Milk River. Can we fill?
It's not discuss those details right now.
Let's leave it at that for now. And that to explore, to explore the the Terigraft system of internet.
Any questions on the paper?
It's T E R R A. In fact, Jeff, I sent you a media, I have, I just had it open here. So if you want to flip that out there, I should have just flipped it to the right.
Sure.
Anyway, there is a, there is a link to Sicklu, the company that provides the equipment. Like I said, it is a Facebook company and it has developed the technology.
Foot shuts it down if they don't have your credit. Those mean you stay there.
He just said in two weeks, so we can talk about it.
Okay, well, once you have the
Yeah, he'll let me know when it's up and running.
And so it's in Milk River and does that have it from the whereabouts in the community? Does it have the house?
They, I'm not sure if the house runs right to the Milk River Cable Club office or if there's another
Obviously there is.
It's the Milk River Cable Club that throws it over there and then television.
Thank you.
Jeff, come on, speak to Yeah, I do have a little update on this since we did the backgrounder. I put that proposal that we sent with MP Monz a while back. And I know we've seen that a hundred times, almost three years. But Glenn actually phoned me back Friday night. We had a good chat about this. So in his opinion, he's not getting any traction for funding for this at the federal level at all. And he says he's, he's readdressed it a couple of times, but he didn't leave us without alternatives. So his recommendation is that we need to try and partner with the First Nation and have them make the request versus a non-indigenous partner trying to make the request. And that we would form some kind of partnership of operation or management or whatever that is, or who owns the asset, that we would work that out. So we had a good talk and tried a number of things, but he, he was, he was saying, I'm not getting any traction at the federal level on this. It's not getting any. Now, coincidentally, just after that phone call, councillor Delaney phoned me from the Blood Tribe. So we had a good chat for a minute. Now, initially we were talking about the Hockenring because he's on the cattle league board, but I, I got tell them how I just had this conversation with Glenn and how we've got this whole agenda for a meeting with the Blood Tribe on a number of levels with another, a number of departments. And we need some guidance on how to put it together. So he's told me that he will help me navigate that. To try and get in front of the right people and start having some of those discussions. So I told him I'd text base with him in the next week or so and we'd start having some conversations there. So MP Monz's recommendation is see if we can do this as a partnership with First Nation and it will get better attention at the federal level. And I think that's probably reasonable advice.
Okay, and when we're talking about that, I remember we had asked if we were going to do a Q and A with police. Tomorrow we're starting the videos. And so that's going to be, I don't know exactly how we're going to do them, if we're going to do a series of clips, but we're going to start the process tomorrow with Southern Tribe. I bet you.
Maybe it's your autograph now. So I don't know if you want me to take that in any different direction before I have a chance to meet with councillor Delaney or go down the road. Just a little feedback would be appreciated on that one.
Personally, I think the more contact we can have face to face with a member of the Blood Tribe regarding the issue that we have, then councillor Delaney is not unaware of what the issue is. And I really honestly believe that the notion of reconciliation is still pending for us. And we need to kind of see how we go about moving forward. Some towns like around in southern Alberta are having a lot more traction than we have. And I'm trying to understand how to go about it is still a mystery to me because we're still going, really nowhere first. And I really feel we wanted to put a flag, that's another thing you may want to ask him. Is there a right time to do that? Could that be a beginning of showing our determination to move in that direction?
Well, I have that whole agenda that you've seen. And so, yeah, he's agreed to start helping me meet with some folks in the departments on reserves, start having some of those conversations.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I wouldn't mind if he was one time to meet, meet us, meet with us. I don't know as council.
Chief and councillor aren't meeting at all right now?
Everything is virtual.
Everything is virtual right now. I asked them that on Friday.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So DHS letter, just some follow up on a previous resolution that hasn't moved on anymore. So as you saw in the request for direction, I'm just, as I talked to Act 4, I said, look, we're not, this hasn't come up at any other municipalities of requesting specific compensation for enforcement. And as the weeks have gone by, we haven't had to do it. So I don't think we have a strong case to write this letter. And that's my concern, but there is a resolution to draft it. And I just wanted some feedback if that's something you still, given the circumstances currently, or we leave it alone for the time? That's fine. I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that.
So horses, we're going to discuss a little bit of Did my mace since last meeting have at least four or five other little dumpings everywhere? So it's starting to accelerate. There's two on Seven Street. Pretty flat now. There are a lot of people's cars, you know. And then there's someone on the East Hill you mentioned as well, councillor, so might be if not a bylaw, at least talk to the alleged offenders potentially to see what they, if they have a solution for it.
I appreciate that. That's what would be one of my recommendations too, that we contact those who kind of like to go on horse, be horse and buggy or just on horses and try to see what they have for us because it is true that in some communities is perfectly not permitted. OLS was always considered a rural town where it was maybe more palatable. But it seems to be it's becoming less palatable for people because of the comparison between the dog owners and horse owners.
Also, if I may, that particular structure, I live inside, there's over 50 kids that go to elementary school. That's all over the road, so I don't agree. Something needs to be done.
It has been there forever and ever a day. And I know every council has had at least once during the term, something that. But I know that if you talk to Dr. Jones, I mean, there is a certain amount of carriage owner in our town, possibly a good three or four. And there is also, I mean, including the Remington. And there are also people up on the East Hill that ride, that ride their horses outside from the fields.
I don't even care if they can't pick up right away. They know their horses are pooping. When you go home, then put your horses away, get in your vehicle with your shovel and go take care of it. So do we already have a resolution?
Yeah, I guess the question is, do you want us to start with asking? We know who rides a horse in this town. It's pretty easy list to make, right? There's one gentleman I pass going home that starts at the Agro Dome and then rides down like, and I don't know who he is. I pass him quite often. I don't know the face, but everyone else, we know this. Can we start by asking nicely? And see if anything changes?
See if they have a solution. That's what I'd say.
And if they have concerns, are you good to hear them at the council meeting? If they have some legitimate concerns with that kind of direction before it's a bylaw, right? We'll approach it that we don't want to mandate it legislate it. So what can we do voluntarily? And if there's some concerns, are you okay if they come to the council meeting? That's good. All right. Well, if you're all comfortable, we'll proceed with that.
So let's talk about what's up.
You wanted us to gauge the appetite.
To tell you the truth, councillor Bounce, I know that you talked about it as an idea for a new tax. And a way to raise
I'm, I'm fine just putting it on open element with the way the situation is.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that because
They can look at, there are very few cars in those hotels. We, they don't need another burden.
No, I don't think that needed.
Under sort of normal circumstances, we can look at it, but no.
I mean, I think the lady makes a perfect point.
Probably get the authors after if you want.
So Land use bylaw, shipping containers.
Mr. Chairman, I was the one that brought this. I have it on the agenda. I've had several inquiries on, on the use of the shipping containers as storage units. And the argument is, why can't they use them? If they're painted, if they're concealed with flowers and a fence and so forth like that. The concern is, is the long time storage units, the amount of length of time that they're last. The ease of, and the, on the ease of breaking into them. You get a storage unit with a, with a lock system on the back doors and then you put some sand and fat on it. You're not going to break into it very easy. There are storage units that are in the residential areas already that have been quite concealed. There's a lot of people that don't know that there's several storage units in the, in the residential areas. One, one residential, one storage unit container is just down the street here. It's in the, it's in behind a residential home. And I think we're all aware of it. They're brand new storage units. And they, they don't look bad sitting down there. But they, for some reason, that, that's been zoned commercial. And yet you've got two residential or three residential places along, along this block. And I, I can't understand that. And we're getting more storage units on Main Street and off Main Street. I just want to bring this back that, that people are, are looking at storage units. And the storage containers, C cans.
So within the
Every, 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 every council that I've been on has discussed shipping containers. Every council.
And our one residential allows them, but it's as temporary.
Yes.
If you're moving or undergoing construction or things like that, you get a temporary permit, correct?
councillor Bance, every time we have discussed that, it was always the element of unsightliness, right? That came back. People let them worse or let them kind of decay on the outside. And it becomes something that is really not aesthetic. So there was the aesthetic element that was part of it and property values around it. So it always was around those elements. So I understand what you're saying. Looked after properly and disguised and not in view at the curbside. It might be something that exists in town and they were grandfathers from what I understand. So I don't know how long ago the bylaw changed. It was before my time. So since then, no council has had an appetite to bring back that idea to serve as garages. And if you really look in the land use bylaw, even a top garage is not even allowed in our town. And I remember that after the hillstorm, there are a lot of people who don't have a fixed garage who were asked could I have a type of transit? They couldn't even do it. So imagine if that cannot be had, how can we say then a, a C can is okay? So the whole, the whole of that notion of garages or, or shed has to be revisited if we want to do it because then there's other things that are more aesthetic in a C can that's not even allowed right now.
Again, I'm not so sure why it'd be traction. It's about the same price as building a pretty good shed. They're about $300 or about $500. I really just bought three of them. Warner got on the wrong side of the village council and he had a good bunch of backtrack on it. So they're not any cheaper than having a normal sized shed, really. I don't understand the traction.
Well, the, the argument is, is the durability of them. They've got hardwood floors in them, pretty thick walls. Wind's not going to rip the shingles off them for sure. Not going to take the doors down. Permanency is a matter of. And they can be disguised, like I said. We had a councillor on the last council that was, had a C can in the backyard and didn't even realize there was a neat C can. And still is brought to his attention.
If I remember correctly, going back when I was first on council, we dealt with this quite extensively. One of the problems is what you do at that C can when it rusts off, they're going to move it. And what they sell that property and the other guy doesn't want the C can, well, those things are a bit of a barrier to get in and out of things. There's a lot of, there's a whole list of things why we did not accept the C cans. And part of it was the aesthetic, definitely.
I, I could have one of my yardies that I've never been able to get it in and out, you know? But as much as I want to, so there's a lot of people that can get in their yards and make them look very aesthetic.
I think that the biggest thing is that the maintenance of one of those, yeah, they can look slightly and then they can quickly turn unsightly. And I think, hmm, this is a time. I don't know if we can just take a little quick strong ball of, does any have a figure of this council, council to change by law?
Yeah, if you want to tell us how to do.
At this time, I don't think I would support it.
I don't have a problem with C can in any yard as long as it's disguised and it's not in public view. I've never been in favor of all the C cans downtown. They, in my opinion, they're always looking unsightly. I don't even like the looks of them. They don't, they don't enhance our downtown one bit. But yet they're acceptable because it's a commercial area. And so the person's got a large enough yard, they can get the C can in the backyard and they have a high enough fence. They disguise it so it's not looking like one. I don't have a problem with it.
So that's a yes.
No.
We can have a discussion.
We can have a discussion.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. So anything arising from the delegation?
I just appreciated councillor South's question regarding how they will be treating a request from the Milk River irrigation district. Because that is true, the Milk River is facing a huge issue with the lack of suitable water, source of water. And every year it's the same story when the water table go way down. And there is no, no reserve of water and they have a trickle in their heart. But it was interesting that she insisted that she does not have an organization that takes a political side rather than a scientific side. It was a good answer, but
I'm not sure of the practice, actually. I'm not sure if they're a walking bit or.
Yeah, and that's maybe an issue. Yeah. Anyway.
Any other questions?
I do have a question, chair. So I don't know if anyone else has received any questions or comments from their neighbors about odor that comes from Moss Beach now that drifts all over town whenever there is this east or southeast wind freezing. But it smells like burnt brownies and, yeah, I've heard from my neighbors, they can't get that smell out of their house.
We, we've had some, it was the last week, there was a really bad day. We had some ingredients, I assume it was, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, and I can, I can add to that. It is a permeating smell. Even if you have all your doors and windows closed, that smell seeps through the cracks and evens and comes into your home.
Even if you're wearing a mask.
Yeah, it's, it's there. And it has a definite burn smell of molasses, burnt brownie. It's definitely there. So what I was wondering, we have a bylaw regarding smell, even if you were smelling, smoking cannabis in, in your backyard to protect your neighbor. We have a whole bylaw regarding that in our town.
Isn't that county, man?
I do not know if the county has any bylaw in place regarding smell issue due to industrial activity and the fringe of our town. And that is maybe something that OLS need to look into for us and try to give us a recommendation of how to deal with it. Because I have no idea. I think for now, I think at this time, it's too late. But in the future, But in the future, if there's two and three businesses like that lining themselves up, cooking who knows what kind of other ingredient, that might become an issue for all the east side properties. And you said that even permeated right up to the centre of town. That is not a good thing, because none of us should have to smell something that we don't know what's in it.
I think if we don't, then, I think some of my neighbours will start smoking cannabis.
You know, I think of Stockyard Alley, Pitcher View, and Iron City, and all those places, they have bylaws about the stink and everything, and the pig barns, and, you know, that's why a lot of people just won't build, buy land anywhere around them. And the same thing of the cannery, not many, many more hog operations in this county, I don't think, anymore.
Yeah, but it's a cooking of stuff.
I know, there are cooking molasses and all that kind of stuff, but I don't know how in the world you're going to do anything about it, honestly. I think it's past our jurisdiction.
I just wondered if, can you check with Murray if we have a bylaw?
Yeah, I do that idea, and they can enforce that.
We have.
If I might say, in the coal operations, when they had the electrical coal generating station, they had diffusers that would, you know, get rid of the smell and the odor of the coal, coaling, of cooking. Maybe there's something that could be done there to help that too. I don't know. I've never smelt it personally. It goes right over top of my house.
At Lethbridge, they're in the York Farms, those big producers in Lethbridge. Where they're in the production of the fall. Now, I can smell that almost all over the city.
Which, which place you talking about?
Lethbridge.
Yeah, no, but I'm talking about, are you talking about the cannery there?
No.
Or are you talking about?
It's, it's on the north side, it's on 36th Park, 43rd. And all those York Farms and Cavendish, those are processing vegetables. I'll tell you, that's quite a stem.
That's the old Lucerne plant.
Yeah.
And let's dig.
Well, anyways, so, should we make a recommendation for for administration to investigate with the county? Because they have a bylaw, anti-contactals, as to possibility to avoid such industries in the limit of town?
Any questions, all in favor? Jeff comes to the end of our agenda, are we going into a closed session?
Go in one, I'll see.